To hear from our last meeting, so we'll be just a few minutes and we'll get started. Meeting will now come to order. Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem not able to be with us tonight, so you're stuck with me, so please be patient with me. First time I've had to do this. We have, I believe, have Robert's Rules of Order to follow here, Ms. Crouch.
We do, and what we need to do here in this instance, the council rules do not speak to when the mayor and the mayor pro tem are absent, so they do speak to Robert's Rules of Order, so you need to elect a presiding officer or temporary mayor pro tem for each of your two meetings this evening, a committee of the whole, and at the start of the regular meeting, so if you guys want to go forward and elect somebody and then we'll roll into the meeting.
I nominate Tommy Dawson to preside over the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we can proceed.
Have we had the minutes from the last committee of the whole meeting?
For approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass. And now I believe we're going to hear from the city attorney, Ms. Crouch.
That's correct. He's going to give a 2021 redistricting briefing along with, we have some guests this evening.
May I remove my mask? I know it's difficult. Sorry. At this time, I would like to submit to you that since our previous meeting, two meetings ago, actually, we've conducted additional analysis of the proposed or alternate proposed map in addition to, for our new districts, voting districts. In addition to that analysis that was done by staff, we also referred the same to legal counsel who you've heard from previously, Mr. Dorment Walker, who also took my instructions and I asked him to try to draw maps or verify the map that had been submitted, the alternate map, as meeting legal criteria. In addition to those two processes, Mr. Walker also employed an expert witness, an expert in this area and field, who you will hear from tonight, all in an effort to try to justify, verify, or confirm that the proposed map would be legally without challenge. And I will turn over the presentation to Mr. Walker as he sees fit to address the concerns, not only of our previous map and why it was, in his opinion, constitutional and legal, but also address the information and data that has been analyzed since we received the alternative map.
Just a point of information before Mr. Walker speaks, that we'll roll into the regular council agenda, obviously, be after 7:00 PM, whenever we conclude committee of the whole, whatever time such happens. Okay?
Thank you, council members. I was asked to do two things, to advise the city, to review and comment on the map that was prepared by the city staff, and then to review and comment on any additional maps that were submitted to the city. And the only whole planned additional map that was submitted to the city is, I think, what we'll call the NAACP plan, is my understanding of, that's who the author is. With regard to the first map, the map that was produced by the city, I want to say that I think that the procedure the city used was exemplary. There were several opportunities for members of the public to come and review the map. They could also review it online. They could interact with city staff if they had questions about the map. And in my experience, it was an exemplary open procedure of map drawing, and I have looked at the map, I've talked with the staff about the map, and I believe that it complies with all of the legal requirements and that it is fully compliant with the Voting Rights Act and with the Constitution. With regard to the NAACP plan, I'd like for you first to hear from Dr. Trey Hood, who is here from the University of Georgia, where he's in the political science department, first, about his analysis of the population numbers behind the Ward Six of the NAACP plan, which, that plan seeks to have two majority districts. And one, of course, is Ward One, which is not numerically a majority district, a majority black district, but it functions as one because many of the students who live in that district don't vote, and because of some crossover voting. So that's good. Ward Six is the proposed crossover district, and I'd like for you to see Dr. Hood's analysis of that before I give you my thoughts about that. So, Dr. Trey Hood.
You can just stand up at the podium, Dr. Hood, and then he's got a remote for you. There's these screens everywhere. Okay.
Okay, thank you, and thank y'all for having me. Again, I'm Trey Hood from the University of Georgia. Was asked to do some statistical analysis on the NAACP plan that was presented. So first off, just big picture here, this is for the city of Auburn, we're not dividing anyone into districts at this point. But you can see the racial breakdown of the city of Auburn, and VAP means voting age population. I can barely see these numbers myself from here, so, but maybe... So what you can see here, and again, this is from, this is all census data, the city of Auburn, it's about 71% non-Hispanic white, VAP. And then if you add the minority groups together across the bottom, non-Hispanic black, Hispanic, non-Hispanic Asian, and other, other would include multiracial and American Indian, for instance, if you add all those together, you get about 29.3% minority voting age population. Now, if you look at another metric, which is important in this case, which is the citizen voting age population, slightly different picture emerges. Again, so this is the 18-plus population who are citizens for the city of Auburn, again, not dividing anyone yet into districts. Now you see 76% non-Hispanic white, 24.1% minority citizen voting age population. You can see how it breaks out into the specific minority groups there. Next, I've got just a side-by-side of those two metrics. You can see there's a fairly large drop-off in the non-Hispanic Asian population, 8.1% voting age population, but down to 2.5% citizen voting age population, and that's what causes the uptick in the percentage figures for the non-Hispanic white population. Now, next, we're going to take a look at how things parse out on these two metrics, that is, voting age population and citizen voting age population. If you divide people up into districts based on the NAACP plan, you can see that dark line at 50% there, that horizontal line. So what we're looking at here is the percentage non-Hispanic white population, either VAP or CVAP, again. So this is the easiest way to look at it. If the bar is below that horizontal black line, that would indicate a majority-minority district, right? So, for instance, District One, voting age population is a majority-minority district because it has less than 50% non-Hispanic white citizens in that particular district. And so is D Six. You can't really see it because D Six is just almost evenly split, but it is a majority-minority district using voting age population. But if you look at things in terms of citizen voting age population, and again, this would give you an idea of the potential electorate in these districts, a slightly different picture emerges where none of these districts are actually majority-minority. D One comes close, but you can see D Six is far and away not a majority-minority district when you're looking at the CVAP population. So the next thing, hopefully, this is clear, I'm glad to answer questions when we get to the end of this, and this won't be too long. The next thing I took a look at is testing for minority vote dilution. Now, these tests were developed by the courts, they go back to about 1986, it's called the Jingles Test, and these are the different components here, these prongs are the different components of the Jingles Test. So specifically, Prong One asks, is the minority group sufficiently large and compact enough to form a majority in a single-member district? Prong Two, is the minority group politically cohesive? So meaning, is the minority group voting together? Do they have a preferred candidate of choice? Can we identify a candidate that they're a majority behind, in other words? And this is a special note on coalition districts. What's been proposed here is essentially a minority coalition district. Usually, Section Two applies to single race groups, for instance, African-Americans, or Hispanics, or Asians, but here, it's being proposed that a coalition district be drawn, which is comprised of basically everyone who's non-Hispanic white. And so in that case, to reach Prong Two, you'd have to demonstrate that all the minority groups are voting cohesively for the same candidate. They're all voting in the same direction, in other words. So that's important. And then Prong Three asks the question, if you can find Prong Two, you go to Prong Three, which asks the question, is the preferred minority candidate of choice... typically defeated by a majority-white block vote? So that's the third part of this. And to sustain a vote-dilution claim, you need all three of these prongs, not just one or two of them. So, looking at Prong One, my assessment, again, which is based on these data here, especially the citizen voting age population, my assessment on Prong One is that, looking at the CVAP population, none of the city council districts, again, this is just sort of recapping what I said, proposed in this particular plan would function, effectively function, as majority-minority districts. And then moving on to Prong Two, which requires some statistical analysis, because what you're trying to do is, is determine what direction specific racial groups are voting for which candidates. So I analyzed the 2018 mayor's race, because again, it's a nonpartisan race at the local level. The 2014 mayor's race was uncontested, so there was nothing to analyze there. So this was the most proximate, what was called an endogenous or probative election, to take a look at this particular plan. Now, one caveat, and we can talk about this more, there's only four precincts to analyze, which gives us very little statistical power. But the takeaway point is, looking at the mayor's race or the mayor's runoff race, the statistical analysis that I performed does not provide evidence that whites and other minority groups have different preferred candidates of choice. So here, sometimes this is called racially, we're looking for racially polarized voting. Our minority groups voting in one direction for one candidate, and white voters voting in another direction for another candidate, cannot find sustained statistical evidence for that in either one of these races that was analyzed. So my takeaway point here, the conclusion under Prong Two, is there's no statistical evidence of racially polarized voting patterns for these elections that were analyzed. So moving on to Prong Three, again, if Prong Two's not sustained, there's really no evidence of Prong Three. If we can't tell that there is racially polarized voting or not, it's hard to say that there is specifically for one, a minority preferred candidate of choice who's being defeated by a majority-white voting block. So the overall takeaway points or conclusions here is that I was unable to find any evidence, statistically speaking, to sustain any of the three Jingles prongs. And again, you need all three of them to sustain a vote-dilution claim. So my major takeaway point here from this analysis is that there's not any evidence of minority vote dilution as related to the city of Auburn City Council redistricting scheme. So I don't know if you want me to answer questions now, or wait, or...
Do you have any questions for him before? He'll be available throughout the committee of the whole. At this time, do you have any questions, council?
The relevance on the Jingles Test, that's, if, if this were to be challenged, the math that's being proposed, that would be, what would be challenged? Allegations of vote dilution, is that, is that what we look to the Jingles Test?
That's, that's one. It could be, again, Mr. Mr. Walker can speak to this. That's more of a legal issue, but there could be a vote-dilution claim. There could be a Fourteenth Amendment racial gerrymandering claim. So...
And what is the, and you mentioned VAP and CVAP, or voter age population and citizen voter age. Why is it, why is that really relevant here in our analysis when we're looking at maps in the data you showed?
Well, it's, it's relevant if the citizen voting age population diverges from the voting age population. Because again, you're drawing a district, you're trying to, if you're trying to draw a minority, majority-minority district, and it can't really function that way because of a number of non-citizens in that district, then you're not really drawing a majority-minority district in the end.
So that could affect analysis, too, if we were to take just 18 over that could vote, but not necessarily account for citizenship, that could skew the numbers. Is that what, is that fair? Or affect the...
Well, you need to look at the CVAP population, yes, in this case. In some, some cases, it doesn't matter. If the voting age population and the citizen voting age population are analogous, it wouldn't really matter that much. But in this case, there is a drop-off for certain minority groups, especially non-Hispanic Asians, in this case.
And one from, one more for me. The, you mentioned coalition, multiple different types of racial groups kind of voting in, together. Is that an automatic, is that by default in your experience with other areas? Or is that going to be candidate-related? I mean, does that always happen?
No, it doesn't always emerge that way. And it has to be shown statistically, I mean, from, for what I'm doing, it has to be shown statistically that it does exist, so...
But that wasn't, you didn't...
I didn't find evidence of that, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. So at, at this point, I'm going to be, I think, a little bit repetitive, but I think it, it, it bears it. The city's plan complies, in my opinion, with the Voting Rights Act and with the Constitution, and fulfills the city's obligation to redistrict itself based on the 2020 census data. Unfortunately, the NAACP plan does not. It can't meet the numerosity requirement, as shown by Dr. Hood. And, and the question that you ask about the difference between voting age population and CVAP is a very good one. Normally, when we're dealing with a minority district, it's just black or white here in Alabama, because those are the ethnic groups that we principally have. And we know all of those people are citizens. But in this case, a large part of the population for the proposed Ward Six was an Asian population and non-Hispanic Asian. And as Dr. Hood showed you, that, that dropped from 8.1% when we looked merely at voting age population to 2.5%. And that's important for two reasons. One is because it's part of the reason that, that the, the proponents of that plan can't show that it could, it could function as a minority-majority district. But also, if the Asian population drops from 8.1 voting age population to 2.5 citizen voting age population, then it's fair to assume that those majority of Asian population that are not citizens are not engaged in a political coalition with, with the other minority groups in the proposed Ward Six. There's, so there's not only, no evidence been presented of a coalition of all those disparate minority groups, no evidence that the, the Hispanic voters and the Asian voters and the black voters and the other minority group voters vote together, support and contribute to the same candidates. But also, we know that, that a, a substantial number of the Asian population isn't even in the game at all because they're not citizens. So for those two reasons alone, I would say that the plan is, is, does not comply with the Voting Rights Act or the Constitution. It merely groups people together because of their ethnicity. A third, there's no evidence of racially polarized voting. There's no evidence that in municipal elections, whites vote in one direction and the minority votes in the other. In fact, it appears from the evidence submitted by Dr. Hood that there is some crossover voting by whites in support of Councilman Finch Taylor in Ward One, which is good. So, so in sum, there's no evidence of Section Two vote dilution. And finally, Ward Six was admittedly drawn, we heard that on December 21, in a race-conscious manner, which is not, which is not permitted. So based on, on these reasons, I would say that it does not comply with the Voting Rights Act and the Constitution. Let me add also that with regard to, to the first point I raised, which is the number of minorities and the fact that there's not enough minority members in the proposed second minority-majority district. The city staff tried to create on its own a second majority district with a sufficient number of minority members, and they just weren't able to do it. And that indicates to me that it's simply not possible to do, given the demographics of Auburn today. In 10 years, who knows what'll happen, given the population growth in this city? And maybe in 10 years, you'll be able to have two minority districts. But I don't think that you can create a second minority district now and comply with the Voting Rights Act and the Constitution. I'll be glad to take any questions. Questions from Mr. Walker?
Mr. Walker, this body's received a number of emails specifically questioning your credentials and your associations. I think it's only fair that you have the opportunity to speak to those criticisms from the public. And I wonder if you could share with us your experience and the, the particular criticisms aimed at you about an association with a political operative by the name of Thomas Hoffler.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to that. There were some comments made, I think it was at the January Four meeting, which I was not here, about Mr. Hoffler. And the short of it is that, that he was a person who was prominent, I think it's fair to say, in Republican, Republican redistricting circles. He, I believe in the 2010 redistricting cycle, he helped in some way or another draw the plans for a number of states, including North Carolina, which, which is sort of like, if, if the Yankees are the Yankees of baseball, North Carolina is, is the Yankees of redistricting. It's just, it's, it's, there's more litigation there about redistricting than any other state, I think. And there's been, there's one district there, Congressional District 12, that's been in the Supreme Court about five or six times. So it's, that's what... He, he assisted there. I met Mr. Hoffler, Hoffler, one time. I think it was at a redistricting conference that the National Conference of State Legislators had before the start of the 2010 cycle. We talked, he told me that he was in communication with a lot of people about redistricting. And I was at that time, working on revising or making sure that the state's guidelines for redistricting complied with legal developments that had happened in the intervening six, 10 years since I had last revised the guidelines. And he said he'd be glad to look at them, since he looked, worked in many states. I sent them to him, he looked at them. He didn't make any changes, or at least he didn't make any substantive changes. And I think that was, maybe we had a few other emails after that. My last emails were hit with him, were in 2011. In 2018, I think he died. And I didn't know this until recently. After he died, his daughter, from whom he apparently was estranged, got copies of computer files of his that, that betrayed some fairly, I think, egregious positions with regard to how redistricting could be used to steal votes from, from Democrats and from minority groups, and perhaps some, some racist views, too. Needless to say, I didn't have any conversation with Mr. Hoffler about any of that back in, when I met him, when I think, 2010, or in the few emails we exchanged in 2011. And, and I, I don't obviously believe that those are the appropriate things to do. I think redistricting should be done in a way that makes our democracy function. And I certainly think that we have to be very vigilant in the protection of minority voting rights in order to have a democracy. And I believe that the plan that the city staff has drawn does that. But thank you for letting me address that.
Thank you.
I have a question. Okay, I just got one question.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned crossover voting for Ward One. Can you explain that?
Yes, ma'am. When I was looking at the, at the numbers that Dr. Hood put up, that showed...
We're going to put them back up real quick. You want the, which chart do you want?
The, the chart...
He can roll through them, just a second.
Yeah, not that one. Go back.
The double, that one.
I may have been wrong, because I think I was looking at that without realizing it was NAACP plan. But I, I think, I wonder if you might not get, crossover voting in your context would be white support for, for you. And I, I think you must get some in order to, to be, I mean, your district has consistently returned a, 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 a black candidate to the city council, despite the fact that, in fact, there's a minority of, of, of black people in the population. So part of that's due, I think, to citizens, I mean, to, to, to the fact that there's a lot of students in your districts who don't vote, as I understand it. And part of it, I think, is that you get, as you should, support from white, white people who live in the district.
Now, okay, so you say that, but, I mean, how can you tell? I guess when people go in and they vote, so they feel like this little form, you know, seeing that they're coming in to vote, but how can you tell the blacks voting, who, who...
I, I could be wrong. I was just basing that on the fact that there's a minority of, of black voters in your district, yet you win. So you must be getting some additional support, is what I was saying.
But the numbers are so low in Ward One. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, how did you determine? Did you determine that from the numbers? Because I think in 2018, and I could be wrong, the Ward One had about 6,500 people. And there was only maybe 600 people that voted, even for, between me and the two candidates they run. So how, how can you determine? And I'm not saying they didn't. I, I was just trying to figure out how did, how was that determined? That all the votes could have been all blacks, or some of the votes could have been, you know, mixed in? So how was that determined to say that I got a crossover vote?
Let, let me be clear. I did not do a full analysis of, of your district. It was just something that I thought from looking at the numbers. It may be that there's not any crossover voting, and the reason that you win is, is because the students don't vote. I don't really know.
Okay. I, I would just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. But what I do know...
Just in case, there were some numbers out there. I'd like to see how, you know, when you go behind, when you stick that little thing in there.
I understand.
They ask you for race or anything like this. I was just trying to figure out, how, how did you determine?
I think, I think the golden standard on that would be the exit polling, which, which, which has never been done here. But what I do know is that, is that your district consistently performs as a minority-majority district, even though technically it's not one. So that's good.
Good.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Walker. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Davidson, did you have anything else? Yeah, there's a microphone right there.
Additional information for the council. I do know that we've, not only did we ask for additional data or evidence to help analyze the proposed map, which we never got. The city staff endeavored to recreate the map in a, in a legal way and couldn't do it. And then separately and distinctly, so did Mr. Walker. And still can't get to a legally defensible map, other than the one that the city manager proposed. So that, in conclusion, is, the situation we find ourselves in, at least legally. And the fear I have is that if you create a map that does not function practically with minority districts, and, and they're not possible to function because citizens, the, the voters you're relying on to make those districts are not citizens and can't vote, then you've created a situation that has diluted both Ward One and Six to the point that there may not be any minority candidates elected. And that is a great risk, in my legal view.
All right, moving on. Questions on the agenda? City Mayor Crouch?
May I have an opportunity to ask city staff a question about this, this, the cities, the work that went involved into the city map?
Mr. Dawson, you're good with that?
I'm fine with that.
Absolutely. Legal counsel will stop us at a point, but go ahead and pose it, and I'll, I'll choose the staff member to help answer.
I know it was briefly touched on in this presentation. But I would like, if it is at all possible, for the staff to comment about the attempts that they made to satisfy the requirements of a second minority district.
Mr. Graff and Mr. Kip, would you like to respond?
Yeah, so, so most definitely, this was an exercise we pursued. And we pursued it in multiple different ways. You know, we, we looked at individual minorities. Obviously, there are not numerous enough, nor compact enough, to serve in that way. And then we also looked at these coalition minority groups. But, you know, as we talked about with the Jingles, we were just unable to find a practical way to put them together that wasn't then violating any of these other boundaries that we have to work within.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that members of the audience heard, heard that. I just wanted to make sure that members of the audience heard that aspect of the work that's gone on in creating this map. Appreciate it.
And I'd also like to just touch on, several hundred hours of staff time has been spent evaluating the alternative map that was proposed by the NAACP. And much care and time was taken to evaluate every bit of it, to make sure no data was missed on our end, was there anything we could do. And to Mr. Graff's point, we looked very early on at the city as a whole, and we looked again and again into December and this early part of January. So I want to be clear that a lot of time and effort was spent, as it should have been, on the alternative map that was submitted. And we looked at a proof-of-concept map prior to that. But the clarity we were provided by the NAACP was to focus, once the alternative map was submitted, to focus on that, which we did. And I just want to be clear, a lot of time and effort was spent intentionally and with great effort to be sure that we had evaluated it thoroughly.
Thank you.
Mr. Griswold, did you have?
Yes. There was a statement saying that some data was not provided by the NAACP that we had requested. Could you elaborate on that, please?
Mr. Davidson?
Certainly. We endeavor to analyze any evidence of cohesion, any evidence of the requirements that were articulated at the previous meeting in Jingles to meet a Section 2 analysis. But admittedly, even from the podium previously, that evidence wasn't there, it wasn't submitted to the council. The first time you heard that map, we gave ample time for that to be produced. And when it wasn't produced, we simply tried to do it internally and externally, and to no avail. So I'm fairly confident that it's not there.
So it's predominantly evidence of cohesion amongst the various minority groups that constituted the...
Alternative map.
Alternative map.
Right. And as I would suggest, it's more of an aggregate of groups, as it is cohesion. There is no cohesion. The alternate is what's happening. They're being aggregated with no evidence that they function cohesively.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. And I think the response was, if I recall, that it was cohesion, that it was up to the, I asked the question again for evidence, and the response was something of the effect of, that was on the city to provide such the response, or to find the information we presented to you. We have tried every bit to prove voter cohesion, and we have been unable to do that. One of our challenges has been that you don't get to insert your opinion as much as you would like to when we're doing a raw data analysis and looking at the law, where what we're looking for is in the data to prove one way or the other. And people would say, "Well, inherently, this is what I think about the citizens of Auburn," or different groups, or whether they're cohesive or not. We were looking for data to back that up of what, which we could not find. And again, staff is in an advising mode on this. We are evaluating based on our technical expertise, and you've heard from multiple experts about, they have been employed in part through the city attorney to also find this information, as we had been asked to do, and we have not been able to prove that in any form or fashion at this time.
I have one other question.
Yes, sir.
I've been, I've been in attendance in a number of presentations of the alternative map provided by the NAACP. One of their assertions is that regarding gerrymandering, that gerrymandering is legal if it's done to, and I'm paraphrasing here, one of their assertions is, as I understand it to be, that gerrymandering can be considered legal if it supports a minority body, or a minority voting bloc. Is that something that...
There's a microphone there, don't worry.
Has substance and has merit?
What the Supreme Court has said is that when we draw districts now, I mean, it's, in the past, you would start with the minority-majority district and draw that. But the Supreme Court has changed the law over time. What they say now is that maps should be drawn race-blind. And then, at the end, when you have your final map, you can look at race and see if there is a strong basis in evidence for taking race-based steps that predominate over the traditional districting criteria in order to create what should be a minority-majority district. But that is not the circumstance that we have here.
Thank you.
Anything else? Is there a move for adjournment?
No move.
All right, we adjourn. This time, we'll go into our regular call meeting.
First person, Dawson, why don't we go into a roll call, and then we'll go procedurally to chair the meeting?
Yeah, I was fixing to, Lindsay, can you call the roll, please?
Dawson?
Here.
Dixon?
Here.
Griswold?
Here.
Hovey?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Witten?
Anders.
All right, this time, do we have a motion for, who's going, feeling for Ron?
Yep. Per Roberts rules, just to reiterate, in case somebody's out of the room, the mayor and the mayor pro temp are absent this evening, and so therefore, the council just gotta elect somebody to preside over the meeting this evening.
I nominate the esteemed council member from Ward 8, Tommy Dawson, to preside over the meeting.
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Let me say, this is, I hope I do a good job tonight, but this is a thrill for me to be able to preside over Auburn City Council meeting. I'm 56 years old, been Auburn all my life, and I never dreamed a country boy from Cox Road would be presiding over a city council meeting. So it's kind of, it means something to me. I'll just put it that way. I care about Auburn deeply, and it means something to me to be up here doing this. So thank you, and be patient with me, please.
We hadn't voted for you yet.
Yeah, we need to vote.
Good campaign speech, though.
Well, you better vote for me. All right, we have, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me while you got me on that one. That's pretty funny. All right, now join us for the pledge of allegiance. That's awesome. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Committee to hold tonight, we heard from City Attorney Rick Davison, and he brought Mr. Walker with him to talk about redistricting. And the professor from Georgia, we won't hold that against you, being you from Georgia, but appreciate you, appreciate you being over here. And that's what we did in committee hold. We had a executive meeting before, executive session before the meeting. We were a little late getting here, but that's all I have on that. Any announcements from, I don't have any announcements. Does the rest of the council have any announcements?
Mr. Griswold?
Yes, thank you. Just an announcement, the cost to the city for the Dixon versus City of Auburn lawsuit is $55,428.91 as of 31 December 2021.
Any more announcements? All right, we'll move into Auburn University Communications.
Hi, I hope you all are doing well. Y'all have probably noticed students are back, because roads are busier and takes longer to get everywhere. So classes are in full swing, second week, we're excited about that. And y'all have probably also heard Auburn is number two in basketball now, barely, barely made it. But we're trying to get all the students to go to all athletic events, not just football. So we're also working on a student section in the baseball stadium, so the students can congregate in their own section. And then lastly, the presidential candidate, Dean Christopher Roberts, is visiting to do a forum where students can get to know him and ask him questions just about his position, and how he's the only single candidate now for Auburn's new president. So that's pretty much all I have. Hope you all have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. More eagle.
All right, now we're gonna move into the citizens' communications on agenda items. Again, this is, you have five minutes to speak to the council. This is for anything that might be on the agenda, if you want to speak now, or some of them hold a public, have a public hearings when it comes up. But if you want to speak to anything else that does not have a public hearing, now's the time to do it, and you have five minutes to do so. Anybody wish to just address the council right now? All right? No one step forward? City Manager Crouch for City Manager Communications.
All right, temporary mayor Dawson. Here we go. Our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
All right. All in favor of the consent agenda? Well, I'm sorry, I need a motion. Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose it? All right, and then we move on to ordinances.
Under ordinances this evening, item 9A1 is a request from Jay Torbett and Nancy T. Henry to annex approximately 10.51 acres located on the east side of Lee Road 958, approximately .35 miles south of Moores Mill Road. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval at its January 13 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Anybody here have a reason we can't move forward this tonight? None being seen? I don't see anybody that does, so now we...
Any questions?
Any questions on discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a question on the item. Are there any plans to extend city water or sewer to this region, to this area of the city? Nothing forthcoming, okay. All right. And I noticed in the public safety comments, I raised some concerns about fire and police coverage. Both seem to be a little bit limited. Fire being more than five miles from the closest fire station, and police jurisdiction have delayed response time. So those are two concerns of mine.
Mr. Register, do you have any, anything to add to that?
That area is, we have a, you know, police unit assigned to that area, so I would think the response time would be, you know, between five and 10 minutes typically on a call to that location. The Ogle Tree Fire Station could service that area. Obviously, it would be a little longer than some of the things on Moores Mill Road, but it is serviceable, but could be a little longer.
Mr. Foot, there are adjacent properties, obviously, that are currently in the city limits. Is that correct?
There are, it's on the map, it's in the packet, the cross-touched areas, that's correct.
This area would be serviced by the Borlard Volunteer Fire Department, right? Just to follow up on Griswold's question there. Even if it's in the city limits, would Borlard service it?
If it's in the city limits, the Auburn Fire Department is gonna service it if it's in the city limits.
But with our, pursuant to our mutual aid agreement, they would, would that be difficult to dispatch them to something in there so close to their...
The Auburn Fire Department would be the primary on anything in the city, but yes, mutual aid would be available from the Borlard Fire Department.
In areas like this, they typically work together.
Yes, sir, that is correct. They would likely be a mutual response, and just whoever got there first would deal with the situation. But they work together regularly in that, in that area.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I hear a motion.
You're good, you just need to vote.
Lindsay, call the roll, please.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon? Yes.
Griswold?
No, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Item 9A2 is a request from Blake Rice on behalf of McQuarreter Properties and Society Hill Estates LLC to annex approximately 48.5 acres located on the north side of Society Hill Road, near the intersection of Society Hill Road and Moores Mill Road. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval at its January 13 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Have a second?
Second.
Anybody have a reason if we shouldn't move forward this ordinance tonight? None being, nobody does, so discussion? Hearing none? Lindsay, call the roll?
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Item 9B is the 2021 redistricting plan that reapportioned city council districts following the federal decennial census as required by Alabama State Statute 1143A-33. This item was postponed, and the public hearing continued from both the January, oh, great, sorry, December 21 meeting, as well as the January 4 meeting.
Move for approval?
You're already, it's already on the table. You were just, you have a postponement, that it's on the table for business, it's whether or not you guys would like to have discussion prior, or any questions prior to opening the public hearing.
We'll have a discussion now or after the public meet?
We've got a question, procedural question. What was the deadline you gave us before, needing this to be in place before the upcoming elections this...
So just kind of going back, we have to have this published in the newspaper by February 22. And backing up from that, the paper of general circulation in Auburn is often considered the villager. When we advertise going into the December 21 meeting, we advertise in both the Auburn Villager and the Opelika Auburn News, just to be sure citizens had maximum communication. So there are advertising deadlines associated with this. I've been asking you to consider having this complete by our very first February meeting. If we go to the second meeting in February, and I believe that is February 15, the February 1 meeting would be the first meeting, we would have to have legal ads submitted to the papers to make a publishing deadline, to meet a six-month prior to the municipal election criteria set forth in state law. And we would have to submit those ads before the meeting. And trying to guess at what the council would do. So really, it is the February 1 meeting.
That would be the deadline.
Would be the deadline. It would be up to the city attorney if we could only advertise in the Opelika Auburn News. They have a little shorter deadlines, but it depends on what day of the week that you hit. And all of our newspapers have been great partners, but they struggle as publishing plans have been moving out of this area and get further away. Their deadlines are, it's a longer lead time for us with their deadlines, and that's a no-choice situation for them. But we often need almost close to a full week out to get things into a paper a week later.
For clarification, when you say the deadline for publishing, what is exactly that we're publishing?
And I'll have Mr. Da, yes, well, when Mr. Davidson will correct me if I'm incorrect, when we, when the council adopts an ordinance, and you're changing, say, something like the zoning ordinance, an easier example, it has not become effective, and you dealt with this with short-term rentals and other things, until it is published. And it has to be published in a newspaper of general circulation. So you're noticing to the public that we have adopted a new law, a procedure of sorts or what have you. And so we can't make it usually effective the day you adopt it. It's effective upon publication. And so state law is saying, for this to be effective, it must be published six months prior to the municipal election.
But to confirm, if we were to adopt this on the first meeting in February, would be good timing-wise to have it for the upcoming election?
Good timing. Also, upon publication, the ordinance that is in your packets is a legal description, and Mr. Graff will assist me with this. That legal description runs further than your maps show. And the reason that they do is if we annex, it runs to county lines. If we annex property along the way, it has to have a district that it belongs in. But we can't anticipate who's going to annex and who's not going to annex, and that's how our current districting is done. So we do have to have time, should the map change, to get a legal description written that is accurate to what the council adopted prior to publication. So, yeah, it's a lot complicated. But yes, February 1 is ample time.
With Ms. Witten and the mayor absent for health reasons, without them having a voice in the process, I believe it'd be responsible, or reasonable for us, to move this to that meeting in February, in hopes that we have the full council here to deliberate and vote. And as such, I'd move now to postpone this to a date certain of, I don't know the date. What is the...
You're looking for February 1. There was also, I had been asked about it, January 25, which is next Tuesday.
Yeah, I like to say, um...
Would that be a special called meeting?
Be a called meeting just about this topic.
Right, because if I'm not mistaken, the first one in February is kind of full now, isn't it?
You have, you've moved the meeting time up to accommodate several other very large items that got postponed on December 21 at the request of the applicants, not the council. And those are some large development projects that are also on that agenda on February 1. It's certainly up to the council.
I think it's very important that we go ahead and hear, have a meeting on this, a special call meeting on the 25th, which will be next Tuesday, I believe. Do we have a motion to, how will we do that, Megan?
Well, you have a few choices this evening. You can open the public hearing or not. You can postpone it straight to a date certain, and we'll set a time. You could also open the public hearing and then postpone it, if that's what you're wanting to do, or somebody's wanting to make that motion. It's certainly up to the council how you'd like to proceed with that.
This time, then, everybody's in agreement with open a public hearing, and then we'll...
Before we actually have a motion and a vote, I'd like to ask another question, if that's all right.
Yeah, we'll have a discussion. Yeah, we'll have a discussion after the public hearing.
You have one before?
Yeah, I still have a question on procedure.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. If we have a special meeting on the 25th next week, what is the advertising requirements for us to have that special meeting? If, well, let me, let me back a minute. If in the event we have a special meeting and some changes are proposed, at that time, we still have to republish what we're considering for the final vote. Is that correct?
That's very challenging, and Mr. Davidson needs to help me along. The, a, a week from now, if you were to postpone a week from now, we wouldn't have advertised any other map other than the one that was advertised in the month of December.
Right.
Depending on what the changes are, I don't know. This is not the same as the zoning ordinance, where you dealt with this with, with another item a year ago, where we had to re-advertise because substantive changes were made. I think the purpose of this advertisement, and Mr. Walker may weigh in as well, is the, the purpose of advertising it was to be sure that the public was properly noticed that you were considering redistricting. I don't know if that map that was advertised was just a map, not a legal description. And I don't know from our legal team if a full wholesale change would have to be re-advertised. That is a question I cannot answer.
If there's a, excuse me, if there's a proposed change, that needs to be submitted. If someone can draw it or has a submission, that would need to be done in advance of the meeting. It's my belief that if there's a substantive change where a major line is redrawn, or there's a big number of citizens moved, then yes. If it moves 10 people from one to another, or one side of the street to the next over a block, and there's legitimate reason for that, I don't think that, that's going to be subject to criticism legally. But I do think if it changes the balance of the, um, I don't know that that raises to the level of gerrymandering. I wouldn't be as concerned about that as if it was a wholesale redraw.
Mr. Davidson, though, the question is just about legal advertising. One thing is for us to be able to evaluate a change against all the, the criteria, but advertising specifically, which I think Councilperson Griswold is asking about, just the legal advertising component of it, let alone the analysis side.
If there is a change, you know, what is the lead, what, what does that do to us time-wise, so that we can still meet your final publication date of the 22nd? If we have another map for whatever reason?
Can, can I, we can adopt amendments at that meeting on this map.
You could, but you're going to have to republish. I mean, you're going to, we're going to have to analyze it.
Post, post.
We're going to have to analyze it, and then you're going to have to make sure it, it is ultimately advertised if it meets all the criteria.
Before consideration or published, that is.
Published.
Yeah. So he, you're speaking advertising, and the question ultimately is, we've already advertising that redistricting. The council was officially considering a map as of December 21st. From there forward, if changes are proposed by the council, we don't have to re-advertise that. If I'm understanding our legal team correctly, that we do not have to re-advertise. But what we do have to do is have adequate time to analyze any potential changes against the criteria you've heard much about, and make sure we can advise you accordingly prior to your consideration for adoption, so that you have that information before you. Because what we can't do is, if we got out of whack with the deviations that are required or, or other redistricting criteria, we have to be sure we're advising you accordingly.
So if we, if we were to have a special session or a special called meeting on this subject alone, that would give us two cracks at this if we didn't resolve it at that special meeting next week. Because we still could, within the timeframe you're saying, by February 1st.
It would. And I don't know that our legal team has, has answered this question. We're challenged because our municipal election happens to be this August. If you don't redistrict at all, if you don't meet these deadlines, I don't know if our legal team could speak to what the implications of that are, because we are running up against a deadline, because you would leave, as we know, Ward 2 has 14,000 people in it. You're, you're leaving wards that are very disproportionate when, when you had census data.
If you choose not to act, then the, the map proposed by the city manager becomes a district map.
Within six months.
Right.
But not in time for this election.
Well, no, no, I believe it is the map for this election, because it was proposed prior to.
Yeah, there's a six-month criteria. I think we would have to look on the fly. We need to get back to you about that piece of it.
Wouldn't we do better to have a special call meeting on the 25th, and if this, just to vote on this proposal, if it's rejected, then you got more time to, to come up with something different, or see which way we go?
Yeah, I think it's purely at the pleasure of the council. What we want to make sure, and we need to be, you know, very succinct about is, you're, you're the elected body. This is your call. And we're here to provide you any information you need to make a decision about those districts. So we're happy to pivot as much as we need to, to get you the information you need to make a decision. And so if that means meeting on January 25th, and then you decide you still need more time, February 1st is the last time I can recommend to you, especially if you think you might make any changes. That is still giving us a very tight window to get all of this done, and we would work diligently to do so. But it is getting dangerously close to a very difficult timeframe for us to meet, to meet all of the deadlines for publishing. Beyond February 1st, we stick to February 1st. We, we, we'll do everything we can to make it happen.
Any other procedural questions?
The August 23 is immovable, correct? Municipal election date. There is, we are duty-bound...
Mr. Dorton, not movable, correct? Yeah.
Anything else?
Well, I'd renew my motion. I'd like to move to, to postpone this to a date certain of January 25th. I don't necessarily know what time. Do you need a time? Is there...
It's helpful to have it. I would recommend you consider, because of people's work schedules, not earlier than 5:00, but maybe 5:30 makes it a little bit easier for you all to get here, and for the public.
I propose 5:30 to a second.
Call the roll?
Yeah, motion and second. Any discussion?
Any discussion?
I, I, I just want to ask the question, okay? Even with, with the proposal you just made, but we're still going to have the public hearing tonight.
That's something you all need to decide.
Yes, that is my intention.
Absolutely.
That's, that's all I needed.
Do you have a choice? You could also open a public hearing. You can act, you know, act on this motion now and then open the public hearing. Or, Mr. Davidson, do you have a preference? It's fine, either way you want to do it.
You have a motion and a second. Do we call the roll on this, or just a...
You can voice vote it, and if you need to call the roll on it, you can.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? All right, it's approved, then it'll be moved to the 25th at 5:30 PM.
And then are you going to open the public hearing?
Yes. Then, or...
Hmm?
No, now.
Friday, or...
Now, is what I think Councilperson Taylor was asking.
Yeah, we're going, we can do it right now. All right, at this time, we've opened the public hearing. If anybody wants to address the council on this redistricting motion, step forward.
Hello, my name is Tabitha Eisner. I reside at 4349 White Acres Road, Montgomery, Alabama, 36106. And I am here tonight as a, in the role of expert for the NAACP on mapping. And I thank you so much for having us and for continuing to give this topic your time and attention. We are very grateful for your engagement. I want to start by talking about sort of the, the very, the most basic question at the heart of today's discussion, and that is what it means for a map to be legal. So in order for a map to be legal, the, the rules say, the federal rules say, the districts must have an equal population, and they must comply, the map as a whole must comply with the Voting Rights Act. Any map, literally any way that you sliced it, you could slice it like a pinwheel, you could slice it in any way you wanted. All of you could be moved to all new districts, and it would still be a legal map if the districts are equally sized and if it does not violate the Voting Rights Act. The Voting Rights Act specifically says that a map should not dilute the voting power of minorities. What does that mean? It, it is absolutely contentious what that means. It is not a simple matter to answer that question of what map does and doesn't dilute the voting power of minorities, or the power of minorities to elect representatives of their choosing. So our map is legal. It's legal. The districts are evenly sized. It does not hurt minorities. It does not dilute the ability of minorities to elect a representative of their choosing. Our map is legal. And I find it very bizarre that it's being presented as if it's not a legal map. So I'd love to, I'd love to hear more about what makes it not legal. The, the voting, so let's, let's talk some more about the Voting Rights Act. So the Voting Rights Act, pardon my mask-wearing. I had COVID recently, so I'm not going to take it off for everyone's safety. The Voting Rights Act does not require that municipalities do the absolute bare minimum. That's not what the Voting Rights Act says. The Voting Right Act says that you can't dilute the power of the minority group to elect a candidate of their choosing if they have adequate political power in their community to elect a candidate of their choosing. So it is perfectly allowable under the Voting Rights Act to create additional districts where minorities have an opportunity to elect a candidate of their choosing, even when it may not be required to do so. So it's, it's not a law that sets a ceiling on how many seats can be made available to minorities, it's a law that sets the floor. At bare minimum, you must have one district, or at bare minimum, you must have two districts. And again, to actually, to actually determine whether Auburn needs to have one minority district or two minority districts is a, is going to be a hot, hot contest, a hot debate. It is not simple. There's not a single way to determine that. There are the Gingles preconditions, right? Those three preconditions you keep hearing about. But those preconditions are arbitrated in court. We didn't bring you a full Gingles argument, because that's not how you make decisions as a city council. As a city council, you make decisions based on what map you like, what map you think is best for the city of Auburn. You can slice it pinwheel-style, you can slice it like a pizza, you can slice it into blocks. It is your choice as the city council how you want to slice that map, as long as the districts are equally sized and it doesn't dilute the power of minorities to elect representatives of their choosing. So that is why we have not wanted to focus on Gingles, because that is a court argument. And if we end up in court, yes, we'll be arguing about the Gingles preconditions. But what we're here to talk about today is, what do you want out of a map? What do you think the people of Auburn should have in a map? Gingles is for court, and we'll go there if we need to. Third, I want to talk about CVAP, the Citizen Voting Age Population. So you might recall, there was a really hot debate, really contentious argument politically across the country about whether the census would include a question about citizenship. And the decision was made by the courts that citizenship could not be asked as part of the census. Citizenship was not asked as part of the 2020 census. So when we talk about citizen voting age population and distinguishing between the voting age population and those who are explicitly citizens, we are guessing. The Census Bureau makes estimates. It's their best guess, but they don't pretend that they're 100% accurate about guessing who is a citizen and who isn't. CVAP does not have to be used precisely because it is an inaccurate estimate, and only an estimate, of the citizen voting age population. That is why we chose to go with the numbers directly from the census. The 2020 census has not released, the Census Bureau has not released CVAP estimates for the 2020 census. So I don't know what they're using to get those, but they're not coming directly from the Census Bureau, at least not data that I've been able to find anywhere. You can Google it and see that the Census Bureau has said they have not yet released CVAP for the 2020 census. So, uh, don't be, don't be swayed by the CVAP, CVAP data that there's no such thing as a minority-majority district on our map. Next, I want to talk about racially polarized voting. So racially polarized voting is determined by the totality of circumstances in a given municipality. It is not determined by a statistical analysis of four precincts and one mayoral election. As Dr. Hood rightly said, that's not an adequate sample size. With four people, you can't decide how to, you can't choose toothpaste based on results of four-person survey, and you can't make any decisions based on four precincts' worth of data. It's just not enough data for there ever to be a statistically significant result. So instead, the courts have said that they look at the totality of circumstances. That word is actually, that's a term that's in, in quotes, used in multiple Supreme Court cases. The totality of circumstances includes nine different metrics, or nine different bullet points that the courts have laid out. That includes the history in a municipality of electing minorities to office. So the fact that there is not a history of electing a lot of minorities to office, the fact that minorities have not won in other districts outside of District 1 would be one of the things taken into consideration. The history of racially polarized voting in the state at large, which has been found to be racially polarized, including Hispanic and Asian populations tending to vote in the same way that black populations do. The history of discrimination in the state or locality. Anything that touches the rights of minorities to register to vote, to actually vote, or to otherwise participate in the democratic process. If the municipality has a history of having some discrimination or discriminatory practices in voting rights or democratic participation, that can be taken into consideration as part of the totality of circumstances. They also look at the extent to which members of minority groups in the municipality bear the effects of discrimination in education, employment, and housing. So if there's evidence, we, we would, if we were in court right now, which we are not, we're trying to avoid that court-like feeling, we would be talking, you know, looking at data based on the economic, education, and employment discrimination that has happened in Auburn. They also look at whether political campaigns have been characterized by overt or subtle racial appeals. Historically, is that something that, have candidates made racial appeals? So all of these things can be used. It does not have to only be precinct-level data, and in a town with only four precincts, it most certainly wouldn't be based on precinct data. I'm sorry, a city. Let me not call Auburn a town. In the city of Auburn, it would not be based on that. So since Auburn's map has never been taken to court, we don't know. We don't know what the court would say about the totality of circumstances in Auburn in 2020. We would bring forward arguments. No doubt, the city would bring forward arguments as well, but it would be up to the court to decide the totality of circumstances. It's not for us to decide here. Pardon me. There was also a question raised about whether our map gerrymanders. So I'm going to talk for a minute about what gerrymandering is. The original term comes from a political cartoon. It is not a, it, oh, did not originate as a technical term. It originated as a, as a joke, as a, as a farcical statement. And it's really, it has come to mean any sort of, when a map is manipulated to benefit one group of people over another. Any group of people over another. It is hard to draw a map that does not gerrymander, in the sense that there are winners and losers in every map. That's always going to be the case. So what we're concerned about is not, are there any winners and losers ever? Because it is a political process. There are going to be winners and losers. We get that. The kind of gerrymandering that is a problem is racial gerrymandering. The courts have said, political gerrymandering, gerrymandering to benefit a particular political party, legal. Technically, not legally, I shouldn't say legal, non-justiciable. It is not something that the courts will consider. They won't even look at cases if the complaint is that it is about partisan gerrymandering. They won't even look at cases if the complaint is that it is about partisan gerrymandering. By partisan gerrymandering, that's when incumbents make a deal and say, how about we make my district more blue and make your district more red, and we both get reelected. Legal. Non-justiciable. Not something that the courts will interfere in. All of the many ways in which we divide neighborhoods up in ways that may be fair or unfair to the people who live there, in general, that is not something that the court intervenes in. The court intervenes only when we're talking about racial gerrymandering. So does that mean that we have to be race-blind in how we draw maps? No, it does not. The court has repeatedly said that although the ideal is that the process be race-neutral, it also, the process cannot, once again, dilute the power of the minority to elect representatives of their choosing if they have adequate power to do so. And so it is your obligation to take race into consideration to the extent that you are making sure that you are not diluting the voting power of minorities. So yeah, if possible, draw it without looking at racial data at all, and then check and see. Is the minority population getting an adequate number of seats? If the answer is no, try again, and maybe you might have to look at the racial data to do so. In, we were talking about North Carolina being the epitome of gerrymandering, right? North Carolina had districts that were shaped like long, skinny snakes in order to connect together populations that identified with one another or were racially consistent. Sometimes that was found to be legal, sometimes it was found to be illegal. In the case, there was a case in Texas where there were two Hispanic populations in two different towns, and they were 300 miles apart. And so the, the state tried to draw a district that took this Hispanic population from this city, went all the way down a highway, and got the Hispanic population from this city, and made a Hispanic minority district. The court said, no, those people aren't connected to each other, they're 300 miles apart. You can't do that. But in plenty of other cases, in the case of Chicago, for example, there is a significant Hispanic majority, Hispanic population on the north side of town and another Hispanic population on the west side of town. They are connected similarly along a highway, and the courts ruled that that was appropriate. They're not that far away from each other, and it allowed them to have the minority representation that they deserve to have. So it is not that shapes can never be changed, it is not that race cannot be taken into consideration. It's just that it needs to not be wild and crazy. If you look at our maps, side by side, the city's proposed map and our proposed map, they are not wildly different. Our map is not wild and crazy. It's reasonable. There are no arms sticking out in strange directions. There are no ridiculous loops. It's just a different map, in which the districts have the same population and in which minorities have the opportunity, not even the guarantee, but the opportunity to have one more person of their community's choosing on this city council. That's all we're asking for, is a second district in which there's the possibility that a minority could be elected. It'll be a diverse, really cool, interesting district, and I have no idea who will win. But it might be a minority. And at least, the minority population would have significant influence over whoever represents them in that district. So that's what we're asking for. We're asking not to go to court. We're asking for you to make a choice, because it's an option, a legal option in front of you, that you can consider. Not because you're being forced by the force of law, not because we have to go to court, but just because it's the right thing to do. I hope you'll consider this map. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Who will be next? Who will be next for the?
Good evening. My name is Tara Foster, and I'm the Executive Director for the Alabama NAACP.
Give us your address, please.
I'm sorry?
Give us your address.
Huntsville, Alabama.
I'm sorry, what? We need the full address either of the business or your residence, please, for the record.
809 Highway 72 West, Athens, Alabama, 35612.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm here on behalf of the State Conference and our local NAACP, NAACP branch 5038. And I would like to point out that the state NAACP is paying attention to how cities are drawing their maps. We want fairness. That's why we're here. I think it's important. And this meeting has been interesting to me. I can't help but to think that our map, the NAACP map, is being discredited, and I find that troubling. Auburn has an opportunity to be a leader in this state with how their map is drawn. So I ask that your vote is taken seriously when you return, because we are watching, we are interesting, interested, and we don't want to go to court. We just ask for fairness across the board, for all citizens to be fairly represented. Thank you.
Thank you. Who will be next?
Elizabeth Hill, 274 Bragg Avenue, Auburn. I'd like to address a process question and a collaborative question. So I think most of you have seen the email that we sent you about the city of Huntsville, one of our cities in Alabama, a similar city that's doing similar things that we are. They're redrawing their maps, they have the same time, their municipal elections are the same time we are. They took a very different approach to their redistricting process. They actually set up a website that had all of the criteria on it. They put software on the website to invite citizens to draw their own maps and submit them. They gave them a deadline. The deadline was in a right amount of time, so they could review all of the citizens' data and allow the process to be collaborative from the beginning. So we, as the NAACP, back in August, began asking questions of how the city would do their map. Could we be a part of the process? That's all we asked. Could we be a part of the process? And they said, no, we're going to draw a map. And we said, okay, we understand that. At what point can we be a part of the process? You can be a part of the process once we have the citizen open forums. So in November, when the map came out, we saw the map. We said, hmm, we're seeing a different picture on this map. We'll go to the citizen forums. We went to the citizen forums, we asked questions. We were realized then quickly that we were gonna have to probably do a little more work. So we came to y'all with a proof-of-concept map. We said, look, this is the way we're looking at the data. Can we sit down? Can we collaborate? Can we collaborate? We kept asking this question. The city staff did meet with us, and the answer in the, in the meeting was, we have drawn our map, we, we have drawn our map. That was the answer that we were given. We had, so when we went back to do our alternative map that is proposed in front of you, and if you would like, I have a handout that has the two maps side by side, since Tabitha was talking about that. Since we did not get the opportunity to have direct collaboration with the city, we took a collaborative approach. So we originally gave you a proof-of-concept map that said, hey, we think this is possible to do too. Can we figure this out? And so when we went back to do our revisions, we looked very closely at what the city did. Look, the city did a lot of hard work. They did, they put in hours. Like, we've heard this over and over, and we are grateful that they did that. They made some very significant shifts in some of the ways that these districts looked. They had, they met, they were working with the federal criteria, they were working with other criteria, but they were also working with some things that they knew from our city that they were trying to do, looking at urban and suburban districts, looking at different things. So when we went and drew our map for the alternative map, we tried to take all of that into consideration. We tried to take in a collaborative approach. We said, we have a proof-of-concept map, we have a city map. If we take both of those, we landed an alternative map. Maybe it's a great map. Maybe it could be tweaked even further. But we're trying to get into a collaborative conversation of how this can go. So we did the best that we could to say, here's our map, here's the city map, we're going to give you the next iteration. We're not throwing their map out, we're not saying that their map is terrible, we're not starting over. I remember looking at the data back in the fall going, I don't know how the city's going to move this around. That ward, too, is crazy. Like, what are they gonna do? And they made some great decisions, and we tried to follow that. And when you look at the maps side by side, they have very similar characteristics. But we're adding that data on top to say, hey, can you give the minorities an opportunity here to get a second person on the council? To get representation that they may not be getting right now, in addition to the hard work that the city did. So we just want to say to you that we took the most collaborative approach that we were allowed in this process. We wish that there could have been a more collaborative process. I hope maybe the next time around, when we get to census staff, that there will be opportunities to have a more collaborative process. But that's how we came at this, and so we wanted to acknowledge our process in doing that.
Thank you. Who will be next?
Good afternoon. Letitia Cleese Smith, 2262 Heritage Ridge Lane in Auburn, Alabama, 36830. So as I have shared with many of you, I am an engineer. And one of the key traits of a good engineer is being intuitive and being able to predict what is going to happen. Unfortunately, I did predict what was going to happen tonight. And that was that we were going to come in here and the lawyers were going to tell us that the map was illegal and that there would be a lot of data analysis. And I'm not a lawyer, and no one back in this room that's part of the NAACP is a lawyer. So therefore, we would not have an opportunity to give any banter back and forth. Because as smart as I might think I am, and as good as I might be able to come up here to the mic and talk, you are not going to hear me. You're not going to give me the benefit of the doubt if the lawyer tells you that the NAACP map is illegal. So let me tell you what I observed. And then I'm going to tell you what I heard. Actually, I'm going to tell you what I heard first. So one of the things that I heard Mr. Walker say was that even with the substantial increase in the minority population, it is not enough to warrant a second minority-majority district. What I would like to ask you to consider is what is enough? If the Auburn, city of Auburn can have a nearly 37% increase on minority population, a significant increase in the Hispanic community, the Asian community, and the Black community, what is it going to take? I think he even went on to say, maybe at the next census. So you guys are telling me that that's acceptable to you? That we can just ignore the fact that we have a 37% minority population? And that we can just so laxadaisically say we could just wait another 10 years and see what we get? Right? We always like to spout about the fact that Auburn is such a great community to live in. I think the mayor may have said this in the past, that it's a good thing that Black folks in particularly could live all over the city to such a point that we can feel comfortable in living in any neighborhood we want to live in. So therefore, we don't live in the same location, so therefore, we do not constitute a minority population. When are you guys are going to apply the litmus test? Mr. Trey Hood is a nice data now, a data analyzer from the University of Georgia. I can tell you I'm from Georgia Tech, so I'm just going to leave that where that is. But the thing about data, data is nothing until you take that data and you turn it into some useful information. And what you guys did today was probably spent about an hour and maybe 15 minutes behind closed doors, hearing a bunch of data, a bunch of lawyer talk, right? And then you came out here, and they repeated it for about 40 minutes, 30 minutes to us. But my question is, how much of it do you understand? How much of it do you think is fair? When are you going to hold the lawyers and the city manager accountable so that you could then actually make a good decision yourself? So that you can take that data, ask some questions, and demand that someone tells you why our map is legal? What was, what was presented today was, here is all the bad things that is wrong with the NAACP map. What I did not see was a comparative analysis that said, here is what the NAACP map said, here is what I said. Instead, I support the, the map that the city proposed. Of course you do, because you were the person that gave input into it. So how are you going to be the reviewer and the approver of the data that you created and not support it? Why would you pay him if he's going to discredit his own data? So I'm just trying to have a conversation, and I want you guys to look into your hearts and to try to be fair about this. We tried to collaborate in a collaborative spirit because we could never come to the table, as Ms. Elizabeth Hill just said, and really say, here is our map, let's talk about your map, let's work together. Instead, we provided a proof-of-concept. We sent that to you guys? Yes. The city spent a lot of hours, and you guys keep talking about how many hours the city spent. That is what they are paid to do. They were supposed to do that, that is their job. We don't get cookies for doing what it is that we're supposed to do. The people who have also spent hundreds of hours looking at this map are people like me that's not paid to do that, that learned how to do this because it was important. So I just want to just let you know that that's nothing to be praising them about. That's what they're supposed to do, that's why they're here. And I want you guys to understand that they work for you. They are giving you this data so that you can understand it, so that you can ask questions. And one of the things that I share with some of you is that you have to then be the one to raise your hand and demand that certain things happen. Because the city manager has already said here in the public forum that there is nothing that tells her to do more than what she has already done. She gave us one map. And because there's nothing written that says that they have to listen to anybody else, she's, she's done what she's supposed to do. And so what Ms. Hill just tried to share with you is that we had a proof-of-concept. We sat down with the city and her team, with the city manager and her team. And we talked about the fact that what else do you need in this map to make this map more palatable? And they shared some stuff with us, and that's how come we gave you guys that map at 3 o'clock that everybody wanted to talk about? Because we spent some hours trying to take our map and update it and give you a map that you might feel was good enough. So we look at the city's map as version one. We look at the NAACP map as simply version two of the city map. That's what we tried to do, was give you something that made sure that each of you stayed in your wars and wouldn't have to run against each other. The map isn't perfect. But I would argue that probably the city map is, if map is not perfect either. So if we can't strive for perfection, why don't we strive for something close? Why don't we strive for something that's fair and equitable? Why don't we strive for something that all the people behind me are here asking you to consider? At some point, we have to, as one of the citizens has said to you often, look in your heart, be open, and listen. And that is all that we are asking you to do. Thank you.
Who will be next?
Good evening. My name is Bill Lee. I live at 1652 St. Andrews Lane, Auburn, Alabama, 36830. And I'm a member of the And I'm a member of the redistricting committee for the NAACP. And my request and my comments will be short. I don't need to reiterate what Elizabeth, Letitia, and Tabitha have said. What I want to challenge you to do, and I appreciate the motion that was made for the postponement of the vote till next week. But I would like to challenge you to realize that in my opinion, you as city council members may pass a motion, you may put a motion on the floor, and pass a motion that says, "We as city council direct the city staff, city manager and staff, to meet with the NAACP and make best efforts to collaborate and merge these two maps." And I'm not talking about a whole lot of change Mr. Walker talked about and the other, the city attorney talked about. If you can move 10 people here and there, I think it may require moving a few more people than that. But some of you, as city council members, have expressed to me that you like the NAACP map, but it falls short in some cases. And I think we can accommodate, if given the opportunity, to make those changes, to make less, maybe less drastic changes from the city map to the NAACP map, but make changes that will meet the needs of those of you who've given me critical information about critiques about the NAACP map. And if we can do that between now and next week, I would challenge you to pass that motion tonight, even though the city manager has done a great job, as we've all talked about. And she's not required to meet with us, but you, you can require her to. And you can require her and her staff to be collaborative. And if we can't reach an agreement, maybe we can come up with something better than either one of the maps without a whole lot of changes. But give us the opportunity. We as NAACP members and committee are reasonable people, and we care about the work the city has done. We're not here to destroy it, we're not here to cause trouble, we're here to create something fair. And if you, if you realize as city council members, the staff works for you. You do not work for the staff. So therefore, a motion is perfectly in order for you to make the motion and pass it. And we will be available anytime, any day, that the city is available, to work together. I think we can have something that everybody's proud of. Thank you.
Who'll be next?
Mr. Dawson. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, mayor and the mayor pro tem in their absence, Herbert Walter Dimar Jr., Ward 12 Opelika Road, Apartment 111. I would like to say, in a brief, bit of levity, I am a graduate of the University of Georgia 2, along with Dr. Hood. Go Dawgs! But the, if you know anything about Athens, Georgia, you know that they have a commission, Athens Clark County Commission. Guess how many minorities are in that commission? Three. They have three minorities on that commission, right now, as we speak. So in terms of college towns in the SCC, I hate to say, Athens, Georgia is ahead of us. This is why groups like the NAACP and groups like the League of Women Voters, and even citizens like yours truly, are very concerned about the way the maps are gonna turn out. I agree with the NAACP that it is not illegal, despite what your city council, your city legal people have told you. At University of Georgia, I got a degree in history. And for my senior thesis paper, I had to work on something dealing with Black legislators during the Reconstruction period. How they got there and how they were removed. To make a long story short, it took a lot of violence, a lot of legal stuff that they, that they implemented Jim Crow to prevent African-Americans from even having any representation in the Georgia Legislature. And, it was 60 years ago this year that Mary Frances Early became the first African-American to graduate from the University of Georgia. At the time, there were no African-Americans in government in Athens, Georgia, at that time. Now today, they have three people on that commission. They've even had a police, a couple of police chiefs and sheriff's deputy, sheriff's people who are African-American. So if it could be done in the enemy town of Athens, Georgia, then it can be done here in Auburn, Alabama. And why so? Why is this concerned? So that we can raise certain issues, like the issues that they are dealing with right now? Concerning a Black cemetery there, underneath one of the buildings at the Georgia campus, a certain African-American community within the university that was sort of leveled so that some of the dorms can be built there? And even the present Black neighborhoods of Athens, some of which have been designated historic districts by the National Park Service and by the City of Athens and by the State of Georgia. And decisions like that are based on who is on those councils and those commissions, not just the elected ones, but also the appointed ones. This is important, because to make decisions like, "What are we gonna have a cultural center?", first of all. Where are we gonna have a library? What's gonna be in the library? Where are you gonna move the recycling center? What are you gonna do at the airport? The airport situation that's up. Or even the Hamilton place, or even something like short-term rentals. People need people that will represent them in matters like this. And even the concerns that Mr. Rizwal raised on the consent agenda tonight. Someone must have approached him, one of his constituents must have approached him about this problem. And even in your case, Mr. Dixon, concerning it, and you and everyone here. And of course, you, Mr. Dawson, concerning public safety matters. Someone had, in the situation involving Cox Road, someone, one of your constituents had to tell you about the situation, or you wanted to raise it up. This is why we're raising this issue. And all we're, all I'm asking for as a citizen is just for y'all to be fair. Now I live in a neighborhood right now in an apartment community which is not predominantly one color or one class. There are a number of international people there. Yes, there are a number of Blacks and a couple of Whites. You know, this is just the real world. You don't necessarily need statistical data really, even though if you wanna consider it, fine. But just look around you in the City of Auburn. Just look at your constituents, just look at how they've changed. And yeah, the, you know, the situation involving the students, you know, that just goes with being a college town. But still, in order to make the students feel welcomed at a place like Auburn, you have to consider them too, because they do have an influence, and so on and so forth. So I would ask you, just as a citizen, and also as a person who holds not only a history degree, but a public policy degree, a PhD from Auburn. So I know a little that I, we had to study stuff like what you are proposing. And we also know that it's a mess. So for someone to say that one map is illegal, just because it's not their map, is, you know, I don't think that's very accurate to say. I did, at the last time I spoke, I did mention something like the Voting Rights Act. And from what I've noticed in the presentation tonight in the committee of the whole, they did consider the federal, some federal action, the Gingles case. But I would still hope that you would take the Voting Rights Act as it stands now, with or without the proposed changes being made in Washington right now, which they may or may not vote on. Or if they voted on it, they might vote it up, or they might vote it down. But take those into consideration, I would hope that you would do. Don't, you know, you, you have to think about the past of Auburn and how we got to where we are now. And you have to think about the present, and you most certainly have to think about the future. Because if things continue as they are, you're gonna have to, with, with or without looking at census data. And with that, I will finish. And again, I say, "Go Dawgs!", and I also know we're gonna lose tomorrow night to Auburn men's basketball team. Thank you.
Who'll be next?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. My name is Dr. Joanna Abram, 206, Timberdale Court, Auburn, Alabama, Ward 2. I wasn't gonna say anything tonight, I just wanted to come and listen. But I have to say what grieves my spirit. I'm the president of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We've been here. We have been here in this area since 1978. What grieves my spirit is this. I have been coming here for several meetings and just listening. That's the only thing I've been doing is listening. And what grieves my spirit is that I'm a very peaceful person, and I really try to have a meeting of the minds with individuals, and to hear their heart, and to see. Not saying this comes from the council, but what I have heard from individuals who have spoken, not from you, let me say that. I want to clarify that, make sure everyone understands that. But what grieves my spirit is this. This has turned into a us versus them, or them versus us, or two maps against one another. And instead of really trying to hear, understand, and hear the hearts of individuals, and to work together. I have been here, as I said before, I date myself, I went to elementary school here. And I've also said that military family. And so I've said all that prior before. But I do look for people to work together, not be at odds with one another. So if you listen to the previous meetings, the previous recordings, it's been filled with a lot of us, them, this, that. It's been filled with a lot of that. The only thing I wanted to hear is people working together. And I have not been able to hear that, to be honest with you, I have not. And it, it's very sad to say that I have not heard that. When we moved back here, and we raised our kids here, my neighbors and I get along wonderful. I mean, we really do. And I say this because I have a neighbor who is 78 years old, Caucasian, and she's my sister. Even when her mother passed away at 103 years old, she said, "Did you guys not understand that they, they have more in common than what they have that separates them?" And we really do. If I would have brought her here tonight, she would have came forward with me. And so I say that to say that when we try to work together, we can do just that. But it saddens my heart, because that has not been what I have seen in coming to these meetings and talking about the maps. So I had to say that, I was not gonna say anything. But I had to say that, because that has not been the case. That has not been the case. And I had to say it and just bring that to everyone's attention, and be able to acknowledge, that's not what's been happening here. And it's, if you just really, and I say you, but it's not really you, it's everyone who's standing behind me, really, who's sitting behind me as well. If they're honest with themselves, they would know that has not been the case. So I just had to make that plain. Whichever way the vote goes, I just think we could have gone about this in a better manner. And I would have expected that more from Auburn, to be honest with you. And no, I did not attend a SCC school. I attended two HBCU schools. So I say that to say that, understand that I'm just a peaceful person, and I'm always looking for peace. And for people to work together, it's not as hard, and it's not as complicated. But it saddens me that this has not been the case. Thank you.
Who'll be next?
My name is Joe Davis, I'm at 311 Lancaster Avenue. And I'm in support of the NAACP's efforts to create at least two minority-majority districts for our city in order to create a more fair representation of Auburn's growing and diversifying population. And if it's okay with Mr. Dawson, for the remainder of my time here, I'd like to actually just offer a prayer over this process. Would that be all right? Let us pray. Oh God, we come before you now with gratitude in our hearts. God, we thank you for being a God of love who is with us now in this very room. You never leave us or forsake us. We thank you for making each of us in this room, every citizen of this city, in your own image, with dignity and worth, Lord, every person in this city, with dignity and infinite worth. We thank you for the calling you've given every one of us to be good stewards of your creation and to love our neighbors as ourselves. God, I thank you tonight for these, your servants, our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, our city council members. I give thanks for the way of service they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here. Lord, we all come to this room tonight as complex people carrying burdens, Lord, carrying joy and hope, trusting that you alone can hold us together, God, in your love and peace. God, help us to trust you more, more than our fears, and more than our wombs, even more than our accomplishments. May we lean on your everlasting arms tonight. God, we remember that in your word you make clear expectations for those who sit in places of authority. In Psalm 72, we hear the prayer that, for the king, to endow the king with your justice, oh God, the royal son with your righteousness. May he judge your people in righteousness, your afflicted ones with justice. May he defend the afflicted among the people and save the children of the needy. For the king will deliver the needy who cry out, the afflicted who have no one to help. He will take pity on the weak and the needy and save the needy from death. He will rescue them from oppression and violence. Through the prophet Jeremiah in chapter 22, you remind us that "Your blessing came on kings who defended the rights of the poor and needy, because 'Isn't that what it means to know me?'" declares the Lord. We remember the apostle Paul writing to the Christians in Rome and his teaching that "Those in authority are first and foremost your servants", that honoring you and doing your will is their highest purpose, that any portion of power they enjoy is given by you and can be taken away. And so we pray, I pray, God, that you would be glorified through the decisions of the city council. I pray that we would have the eyes to see how our lives are all connected and how our common good is upheld when we listen and respond to those most vulnerable among us. We pray that your kingdom would come in Auburn as it is, in heaven, through your power, working in each of these, your servants. God, may your truth be revealed, may your light shine brighter, may the voices of those most silenced be heard and loud and clear. Lord, defend their cause through this governing body tonight. Lord, we pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put the interests of others above our own, may we act with love for the common good, may we be good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person here. And we thank you again for this council, our mayor, our city staff, our first responders. We especially remember our hospital staff and all those who are working to make this place we call home such a wonderful city. In the name of Jesus, whose perfect love sets us free from all our fears. Amen. Thank you.
All right, who will be next? Anyone else wanna speak?
John Sophocles, 530, Lee Road, 115, Opelika, Alabama, 36804. I'm gonna try and be brief. Seems to be a lot of discussion about growth in Auburn. So I'm here speaking in support of- So I'm here speaking in support of the letter, and more the spirit of what the NAACP is trying to accomplish here. If I get the data wrong, forgive me, but I understand that the census data says we have grown 43%. So why hasn't this body grown? I think that three increased members on this body would be a huge improvement. There's a lot of discussion about diversity. Out of all of you, the one that I know and speak to the most is Connie Fish Taylor, who I think the world of, not because of her gender or her color, but the content of her character and her spirit. There's nothing that I can say, I think, that will change your minds, and I think that most of you hate casual empiricism as much as I. But I look at this body, and I do not see diversity. How about we have some more members on this, so that real representation will remain constant, or something close to constant, and we might see some more diverse faces, views, concepts, perspectives brought before you? This is nothing new under the sun. In 1929, our US Congress limited itself to 435. What's happened to population, my dear council, since 1929? It has grown immensely. We have one House member for something like 700,000 in Alabama. Auburn can be better than this. Make real representation to where there's enough members here that can hear what the people want. Come to you and say, these are the problems. If not, I can only forecast that folks will think as well of you as they do of the approval rating of our Congress, which can't possibly be representative under those circumstances. I appreciate your time to hear me speak. Some folks say I'm too passionate, so forgive me if indeed I am.
Does anyone else wanna speak to this matter? Anybody else?
Good evening. Leah Billy Welburn, 112 North de Barre 11th Street, apartment 5, Auburn. I'd like to add my voice to the request made earlier this evening. Excuse me. As a council, please, will you pass a resolution tonight directing the city staff to work in collaboration with the NAACP representatives, beginning this week, to create a map that works for everyone? Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing, no one else speaking, discussion.
You have motion and second to postpone, so from here, yeah, discussion is up to you.
Well, I'd certainly like to respond to, as many of you as I can, there was a lot to listen to, and I appreciate all of your contributions to the conversation. A couple of, a couple of things immediately to me. I must say, the idea that we look into our hearts is certainly front and center for me. And I think there's many of you here tonight who have seen me and other members of this body at meetings, that you've presented your argument, and you've presented your case. And I've listened, and I've looked into my heart. I know for a fact that, well, I, I can say that I, I have come to know some of the staff directly working on the redistricting process, and I, I believe I know their hearts, and I believe that I have assessed them to be good people with, with a large picture in I think, I think we've, I, I'm glad we've had this conversation. I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like for you to all acknowledge that we haven't rushed to a vote on this. Every time it has come before us, one of us has voted to postpone, and we have done so over, over the course of, since November, early November. So I, I think, I think there is evidence to support the idea that, that this body is certainly open to a second minority-majority. I'm certainly open to it, I, I've made no secret of that. I, I've gone to every meeting that I can to show that I am sympathetic to the idea of a diverse council. I, I agree, we look incredibly homogeneous up here, and I think there is a, the look of us does not necessarily reflect the population of our town, but that, there's a number of, there is a number of degrees of, there, there is a, there is more wrinkles to it than simply the lines in our town. There must be people to run, there must be compelling reasons to run, there must be a, a great argument that you present, there must, and this, I do believe that this is open to anyone, regardless of where you live in this town. I think we've complicated our conversation through the correspondence of legal representation that makes conversations between the city and other bodies much more difficult now, because people have drawn lines in the sand, legal lines that make collaboration incredibly difficult. I don't even know that it is possible legally for us to collaborate. I, I don't know that, because I live on Woodfield Drive, and I'm a fire inspector. I have to, I have to look at people, I have to get, be in front of all the people that are, that are contributing to this conversation, and divine a way, while I look into my heart, about fairness for everybody. And I believe my representation on council has focused on that since being elected in 2018. So I don't even know, I, I'd be willing to extend that hand of collaboration from my perspective, but I don't know what the ramifications are. If I say, hey, who has an appetite here on this council to direct the city manager to work collaboratively with, with the NAACP? Is that even possible at this point? I don't know. Well, I don't, you can say yes, but I don't know that it's, I don't know that legally we have that, that opportunity, given the intervention of legal, legal commentary. So I, I don't know that I can pursue it any further than that, other than to say, I have looked into my heart.
Any, any other discussion?
Oh, well, I would like to say, I, I've just got some comments that I would, would like to make about tonight's public hearing. I, I listened to everyone that spoke tonight, and I, I also heard valid points from both sides, even with the committee of the whole, and, and the NAACP in the public hearing. So it, it, when, when, when you're sitting in a position that, and I'm gonna just talk about me, I can't speak for nobody else. When you're sitting in, in a position up here like I'm sitting here, being the only minority on this council, your mind sort of make you think, is, I mean, who is, who is actually being, and I don't know no, no way to put this, but, you know, is everybody telling the truth about the legal, legality of, of the maps? Is the NAACP map legal? And of course, we've heard tonight that it's not. But we also heard that the city of Auburn map is legal. I just wanna, you know, in my mind, I'm trying to think, why would the NAACP present to the council, the city manager, an illegal map? What, I mean, what would they, what would they gain from it? So it puts you in a situation that maybe questions some things in your heart and your I just, I don't see a reason, maybe it wasn't done, I, I would have liked to say that maybe it wasn't done, maybe to, make this, that the city expected, the expectations of the city, or something, but to just to say it's illegal, and I know we heard from legal counsel and that type of thing, but I'm just trying to figure out what would they gain from it? And, you know, at this point, I don't know actually how much, as a council person, that we can actually speak on so many things I probably wanna say. Because we, you know, we got legal advice in our session. So it makes it sort of hard to ask certain questions, but I understand I can, after, you know, in private. But, but, but alternatives to any situation is not bad. That's even including when we raising our children, in our marriages, or even in our workplace. So there should be an alternative to any situation put before you. There should not actually ever have to be that this is it. We're living in a different world, we're living in a different time. We're not living in a, you know, where, in a time where somebody sits something on their table, and we got to eat it, just because they sit it there. So I, as a council person, I would like to propose that we ask this council, this, not the council, but the city staff, to maybe reach a decision, no, that's not what I wanna say. Oh, what I, I really wanna say, and I, and I, my mind going so many different directions right now, is that the proposal that Mr. Sophocles proposed, that we sit, that the city staff at least try to come back around the table, and not, not just destroy Auburn map, but at least look at some things that may, some tweaks in the maps, and put them together. And at the end of the day, that that map's not only satisfy the council, but it satisfy the people.
Connie, was that a motion?
Hold on, wait, now, wait a minute, now, wait a minute. We, we got a motion and a, a second on the table, am I right?
You've, you've already voted to postpone, this matter is no longer on the table. But I wanna, I wanna be clear, Councilperson Dawson, anytime, A, the council cannot direct the city staff itself to do anything, it can only direct the city manager. B, I would never ask you to take a formal vote about this, other than if you're dealing with my contract itself. This time, I mean, if a majority of you are asking us to take a different look, we've, we've informed you, we've taken multiple looks, we're happy to look again. I need specifics as to what it is that you want us to look at, and no, I don't expect you to have the technical information. I'll have to vet who we can meet with, based on things you heard tonight and letters we've received, if we can meet and collaborate, as Councilperson Parsons alluded to, we'll have to vet that with legal counsel, and I cannot answer that question tonight unless legal counsel is ready to answer it, Rick.
Well, let me just say this, we, we've had, we've had to be denied, we postponed it to the 25th, so we were just giving people a chance to have some input, that's what the public hearing had to say. So really, this matter's closed at this point, we'll be back on the 25th?
The actual redistricting plan, yes, but any of you, you know, it, I received, as we've talked before, one, one council member proposed in the middle of November, a change they'd like us to look at. If people have got any specifics, any of you, that they want the staff to relook at or figure out, you know, I'm certainly happy to do that, but to date, from the council members themselves, I've had no other feedback about that. And so until Councilperson Taylor said something this evening, but our ability, there's been much said about collaborating with groups when the map was first drawn. The way that was done, as the city attorney indicated, we put out, I put out an email, the NAACP received the same email in July, explaining what the process was. I had one council member ask a question about that, that was Councilperson Taylor, and that was it. Then we moved into November. So we don't collaborate with any one group when we're putting the city's official map together. That is a proposed map based on data and the law, and that's it, not opinions, nothing else. So that, that map is out there, we have to by law, and I've said this repeatedly, and maybe, I understand people are tired of hearing it, but the staff has no goal other than to advise the city council, based on what we see in the data, and our professional best efforts with the data, to put something together that didn't just meet some of the criteria, we tried to meet all the criteria, we tried to do absolutely everything we could do, every criteria out there that is known with redistricting. Nobody said a map was perfect. What we did is we put something forward for you to consider, and we are here. If some of you are asking me to do something specific, I'm happy to sit down and talk with you about it. I just need to understand clearly what it is you want, and we'll make every attempt to get feedback to you. To date, we have had no other special interest groups ask for interaction with staff about this, we've had some dialogue, but it, it is certainly up to you, and I don't need a motion from you, it's not, nobody's asked to date to do something different, and so I'm, I'm happy to try to oblige, as long as we can track legally in doing so.
I think the only thing to do at this point is meet the 25th, and vote on this proposal before us right now. If it, if it's passed, then it's passed, if it's defeated, then we start over again, we're trying to come up with some type of agreement. I think that's the best thing to do at this point.
Okay, so with that being said, I'm, I'm just gonna ask this question. Okay, we, we have a meeting, a special comment that we voted on for the 25th. So in between time, is that what you're saying, that we can come to you if, if we want?
Any, any of you, and to council you, I need, I just need an idea of what it is you're looking for. If you've had conversations, or you're interested in something specific, give me a call, text me, you know, whatever, I'll make all the time I can make to talk with the council members about what it is you're wanting to get at. Now, for the public, I don't meet with more than a couple council members at a time, we don't, we don't do that, there would not be a body assembled, but any of you, reach out to me, I'm happy to talk with you about it, figure out what you're trying to get at, and, and research what we can between now and the 25th to provide you feedback. That's not a problem. That's not a problem at all, happy to do it.
Okay, now, um, at the last city council meeting, we was, I think, told that we could, um, ask questions or, uh, and, and the answers would be to us before this city council meet, meeting. And we could put those, we could, um, I guess we was gonna have some type of, um, feedback or whatever. So I, the questions that were asked, we didn't, I did, well, we didn't know, uh, the answer to them until an hour before the meeting. So it's sort of, it, it's sort of hard to, to wait an hour before a meeting to get the answers to your questions.
The answers to your questions from two weeks ago, is that, am I understanding you correctly?
Yeah, but I, I thought we was gonna set up some type of, you know, where, where we could at least, uh, ask some questions. I can't remember exactly the wording that was put out before us, but, but if there was questions or anything that we needed to ask, and those questions would be submitted, and we would have answers prior to the meeting, but not an hour prior to the meeting, is not what we're seeing. And, and, and you answered questions tonight, that's when we had this special meeting.
And I'm trying to recall, um, I, I, I'm happy to go back and read, look through my notes in minutes. I don't recall specifically what you're referring to. Now, we did give you questions and answers, and I actually have an update for you, we'll be emailing, that have come through the city's redistricting site, we've received a few more questions, and we've provided those to you all along so that you know what citizens are asking, or they've called, emailed, et cetera. Um, that, that's the one question and answer we've referred to. If there's another thing, I'll go back and check and, and make sure we're tracking. Um, as we discussed the last meeting, you would be the first to know, you're the elected body and the decision makers on this. Um, we haven't been withholding information, we had to present it to you all at once. And this was the only way in which we could do that, there is no memo generated, and this team needed to speak to, um, the, the alternative map provided to give you that, that information from there. Obviously, in the city's map provided, it was provided for specific reasons, which we have provided to you since early November. That's why we haven't spoken to it further, but if you have specific questions to that, we'll be happy to speak to that as well.
Well, tonight, tonight, an hour before the meeting is when, when we found out that the NAACP map was illegal.
Illegal?
Yeah. Basically, that's what you said, that the map was illegal.
But tonight was, the meeting was to get input from the city attorney, and hear whatever attorney he has selected. And I think that's not, I don't see how we could have known any earlier than that, when we get, we get everybody together and ask the questions of him, and, and we get their professional opinion and.
I appreciate your comment, but what were you thinking about that?
Two points, one, the information that was shared tonight wasn't finalized until yesterday. The second point is, when I get a lawyer, a letter from another lawyer or another group threatening a lawsuit, it's gonna be my advice to get all of our information and meet with legal counsel first, and you hear it first before you share it with anybody else. I think that's prudent legal advice, I, I will continue to give that legal advice. And as long as we're under a threat of being sued by anybody that walks to this podium or sends a letter, that will probably be the protocol, because I think it serves the best interest of this body who has to act as a body. And everybody on this group deserves to hear that in, information when we're under a threat of litigation before anybody else hears it. And unfortunately, that's the, that's the tone and tenor that this has been given to us, and it's not, uh, by our choosing. It was what was, was dictated to us, so we're pleased to give you the information, it just has to go in a certain manner now.
Okay, and, and I appreciate that information, because I think that's what I wanted, it to be, uh, known that, you know, uh, that we was threatening that the NAACP sent a, a threat of, to be sued. So that never did come out tonight, so I, I, I was hoping that, I sort of kind of brought that up for that to be said, because I didn't know if I needed to, could say it or not.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Just for clarity.
That was my point, okay.
Just for clarity, and so that, uh, each council member, particularly myself, stays in our lane.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if I understood you correctly, uh, I could call you and say, hey, I met with somebody who would really like to sit down again with you. It, but that seems to me, to me, me directing you to do something, and therefore me getting out of my lane and not being representative of the body.
Well, my questions would come as follows, there's been some confusion about the city's lack of attendance at some ward meetings. We haven't been able to because of some items that were just discussed without our legal counsel present. Um, and it's unfortunate that that is where we are, but that's where we are. At the end of the day, I can meet with individual citizens, but I do have to vet, you know, what's going on with legal counsel, because we have been put down this path, it's not the ideal situation. It is the cards in which have fallen where they have in this, in this process. Um, we try to meet with individual citizens, and we've tried, to my knowledge, to respond as best that we can to everyone. One of the challenges is that the process, and, and I acknowledge a lot of people said this, it's a confusing process for citizens. We only do it once every 10 years. Um, state law says a few things about it, and federal law says much, as you've heard tonight, ad nauseam about it. Um, and also, this is a nonpartisan council, so we're not talking about anything having to do with partisan. We're talking about local council districts where I believe the most impact is. Um, at the end of the day, I'm happy to try to meet with anybody if I'm able to, that, that, once their question's answered, as to, you know, where we stand with the city's map, you've got a proposed map in front of you, as we've discussed before. Any council member can move to amend it in any fashion in which they see fit. The sooner you tell me about that, the more we can analyze, um, and, and provide feedback. If we're able to do that against legal measures, or if you want a replacement map, that's fine, anybody at this dais can propose it. We're happy to do that, we just need the information as quickly as possible for stuff you might want us to consider as council members or citizens are asking you, um, and you want to consider it, to get to the staff so we can provide information to you to make a decision. That's all.
Ready to move on to resolutions?
One more question here.
Yes, sir.
Again, in, in, following up on Bob's, make sure we're in our lane. The, our ability to be collaborative at this point is very limited, because the situation we've been put in, which is potential lawsuit, so because of that, the potential, and if I say something I shouldn't say, you should cut me off here. Uh, we, we simply can't discuss things that have the potential for litigation. So our opportunities for collaboration at this point are very, very limited, right? Okay?
They are, I'll have the city attorney speak to that.
I think you've summarized that.
Okay.
What information you have should be presented in a public meeting, it should be presented to all of you at the same time, and we all get to hear it and see it and make decisions based upon that. But when someone has, when, when a group or individuals have threatened lawsuits from the, from the podium and have sit, put that in writing, it makes it difficult for me to suggest that any single, single council member meet with a group or with a specific group who has threatened litigation, unless you have legal counsel there, um, it makes it difficult. And we, it, it's hampered the process, again, not, not at anybody's choosing, but it's just a situation we find ourselves in.
Thank you, that clarifies it.
That also does not stop any council member from meeting with, with me, the city manager, and I can bring some staff with me, or if we need to, um, analyze something you want to submit, and any citizen emails anything, and we're gonna take a hard look at it.
Ready to move on to resolutions? Ms. Crouch?
Item 10A is a request from NP Alabama Investments LLC for vacation of a drainage and utility easement located at 114 East Veterans Boulevard. A public hearing is required.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, open public hearing on this matter, anybody want to speak to this matter? See you tonight, we're, uh, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion?
Temporary mayor Dawson, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
All right, uh, before we move on to, uh, open, citizens' open forum, I, I would like to make it clear, as a member of this council, I support Ms. Crouch 100%, she's worked her rear end off to get this to the table. We heard from experts tonight, they said it was a, a good job, it wouldn't have been done. So I appreciate you and your staff, and, uh, I know what it's like, we take a lot of heat sometimes for stuff. I was working city government for a long time, and, uh, I, I just appreciate your hard work. I've known you for over 20 years, and you've cared about this city, and you're one of the most fair people I've ever been around. So thank you for your hard work and keep up the good work. All right, it, now it's time for citizens to speak to us on any matter they want to, for three minutes. Anything at all? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Linda Lee, uh, 1652 St. Andrews Lane in Auburn, 36830. Um, I just wanted to comment that, um, I was reading an article today, and I, I'm not sure exactly where it was. I was Googling redistricting and trying to see what some of the other towns in Alabama were doing with this. And it was interesting to read about what Mobile is doing. Uh, I would suggest that you take a look at that. And of course, they're in a very different situation than we are. Um, they have now gone from, I think, 47% minority to 51% minority. And so their council has stepped to where there's no longer, I think they have, uh, seven, but there's now four minority and three majority, uh, council members. But I thought the mayor made a very, um, interesting statement. He said, what we'll be doing going forward with the redistricting, they hadn't dealt with it yet, and obviously, their election is further out than ours, um, is that at this point, we'll be taking maps. Maps, plural. The city council will be looking at maps. The city council will be looking at maps. Okay? And we'll be looking at those maps and, uh, making some decisions about them, we'll be in discussion about it. That's a little different process than what we've been through here. And folks, I think it's the process that's broken, that has gotten us to this point. Um, that's, that's all I want to say. I, I think everybody involved here has excellent intentions and loves Auburn and wants to do the best for our town here. And you're constituents, and I, I, you know, I, I just, I, I, I think the process is, I've been watching this, and the process is broken. I don't know how we change it, but it's broken. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the council tonight?
I'm sorry.
I just said anyone else want to speak?
Hi again, Billy Welburn, 112 North de Bartleven Street, apartment five. I understand that there is a potential for a lawsuit, presumably from the NAACP, and that the city attorney's office is doing their job, which is to advise the council and, um, protect the council, the city, everyone from liability. My assumption is that the NAACP has this tool in, at their disposal, and that they're willing to use that tool to ensure that Auburn gets a second majority-minority district. From what I heard when representatives came up and spoke tonight, they don't want to have to go down that route. And I know, um, I think it's safe to say, uh, the city attorney's office doesn't want us to have to go through a lawsuit either, council members, everyone here. Um, so for that possibility to exist, and for us to respond to that possibility by saying, well, we're not gonna collaborate because it could open us up to that risk, uh, it seems to be a bit of a self-defeating and self-fulfilling prophecy, from where I'm looking. We live in the South, um, we have a history of racial injustice. And, um, I think the tactic of protecting ourselves is, you know, speaking as a white person, we've had power in the system, the system's worked for us. So in this way, the system can protect us, um, the council, the city, everyone. And I think that if we were to take a leap of faith, so to speak, and say, hey, you know, council has advised us, it does put us at risk. Um, but to say, you know what, to take on a little risk, to fight for justice of people who have not only had risk, but had harm over our country's history, I think that would be a really powerful declaration to our city and surrounding community that we want to make a difference, we want to be fair, we want to right the wrongs, and we're willing to take a risk and make that happen. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to the council? See you tonight, we're here to move for adjournment. Got one more, okay.
I'm, uh, Robert Wilkins at 261 Denson Drive, want to talk about the ordinance, uh, 3288 Short Term Rentals. Um, I know that, uh, y'all spent three years in developing the ordinance, even though I've looked at the ordinance, and it looks pretty much like the 1999 ordinance, I don't, I looked at it under the microscope, didn't, didn't see much difference. You voted five to three, one person could have, uh, made it a tie, and it would not have passed. So I don't consider it an unanimous type situation. Um, some things y'all were mentioning today was, uh, there was no statistical information about why not to have the short-term rentals, or what y'all called tonight, the raw data, uh, dealing with the redistricting. Um, it was pretty much, uh, that I've noticed is, it was four or five people in the community that objected to it. And they did such an incredible job of doing the petition, they got like, what, 1,100, 1,200, uh, people? And of course, the way they did that was they were, they took, uh, signatures from people who were in the lines at the different schools and said, do you want to know hotel in our community? I'm telling you, if I was in that line with my grandson, and they asked me that, I would sign it in a heartbeat. I don't, I didn't want any hotels, there's no way, okay? Um, and also, you developed a task force, I believe task forces are incredible. There were five city-related people on there and three non-affected citizens. There was no recommendation by that task force. I've never heard of a, a task force that had no recommendations. Uh, if you had included some people that were affected, like me, uh, the 151 families that you said, uh, uh, you know, we, we were in violation of, of the ordinance, uh, if, I believe you would have gotten some recommendations. Probably too many to, where you were going into election year. Somehow, election years always seem to put people in a position of not doing a lot, if it's got controversial things. Um, I wanted to talk about, I've got bills here, uh, you, you took away half of my income, and you had no, uh, validity to that, uh, uh, thing. And Mr. Griswold, you have mentioned, uh, about keeping us informed about the lawsuit cost. I, I don't quite understand when y'all, uh, go to Birmingham to get your law firm. And I don't know how much money it costs to go from Birmingham to here, but per hour, it's pretty expensive just to come and, and show up. So I, I don't quite understand that. And then, uh, you, you, um, I don't know if you didn't think there was the capability of the Auburn area that they should, they didn't, wouldn't be able to handle this thing, I don't know, I don't know what the reasoning is. Uh, also, you've been asking for continuancies, that costs money, why? Why would, why would your legal counsel, uh, do that? I just want to state that the ordinance 12, 3288, give me just one second. Uh, 3288's taken away 152 families with, uh, our constitutional rights, and I understand why.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, uh, why should we believe in the old, that old dusty 247-year-old document that is housed in the Philadelphia? It says, just, we the people.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, move for adjournment, uh, so moved.
Sir.
Sir?